At six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order if Phil can lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, God, thank you, Lord, for this and other day. Thank you for all the blessings of life, both great and small. God, I ask you to go with us in this meeting. God, please bind us together as a city. Help us to make the best decisions we can on behalf of the citizens of Coming. God, just help us to make this city a light on the hill and an example for the rest of the world. Lord, just help us to always seek you, seek your guidance, your grace, and your mercy in all that we do. Now, go with us, lead God, and direct us. Please grant us traveling graces back to our homes tonight. These many favors and blessings I ask in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Everyone want to join us in a pledge of the flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is to consider the agenda for adoption. We have an addition under administration, item two, resolution of the city council concerning the request of a member of the council to be censured for the conduct of that same member of the council. There are no other additions I'm aware of. We have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh. Next is to consider for adoption the following meeting minutes of the regular meeting, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh. Item six, there is none. Item seven, there is none. Under new business of swearing in of a new police officer, Ms. Emma French. Hmm? I do?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's really my pleasure today to introduce you all to Ms. Emma French. We hired her back in February, and she just recently completed her time with the police academy, and will be sworn in as a new officer, and we're looking forward to having her on the agency. I think you'll find that she's going to be a tremendous benefit to this city.
And it is our pleasure to have you, Ms. Emma.
Thank you.
So if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Emma French.
I, Emma French.
Do swear or affirm that?
Do or affirm.
Do swear or affirm that?
Do swear or affirm that.
I am not an incumbent in any office?
I am not an incumbent in any office.
Of trust in this state?
Of trust in this state.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
Or of any foreign state?
Or of any foreign state.
Which I am?
Which I am.
By the laws of the state of Georgia?
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
Prohibited from holding?
Prohibited from holding.
A further swear?
I further swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I am not the holder of any public monies?
I am not a holder of any public monies.
Unaccounted for?
Unaccounted for.
Do this or any other state?
Do this or any other state.
Or political subdivision?
Or political subdivision.
I swear or affirm?
I swear or affirm.
That I am qualified to hold this office?
That I am qualified to hold this office.
To which I am appointed?
To which I am appointed.
And for so long as I am employed?
And for so long as I am employed.
As a peace officer within the state of Georgia?
As a peace officer within the state of Georgia.
I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Of America and the Constitution of the state of Georgia?
Of America and the Constitution of the state of Georgia.
And I will faithfully perform?
And I will faithfully perform.
And discharge the duties?
And discharge the duties.
Of my position?
Of my position.
Consciously and without malice?
Consciously and without malice.
Or partially?
Or partially.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
I further swear or affirm?
I further swear or affirm.
To obey and to adhere to?
To obey and adhere to.
To uphold and to enforce?
To uphold and enforce.
The laws of the United States of America?
The laws of the United States of America.
And the state of Georgia at all times?
And the state of Georgia of all times.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We made it through. Good job.
We made it through.
You're a Georgia fan, right? Should've found that out ahead of time. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
At least it's not over. So next, under administration, item one, the Beaufort Dam Road Extension Project Stream Mitigation Credits.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, during the design phase of this project, we had to apply to the Georgia EPD for a stream buffer variance. At that time, we didn't know whether or not we would be required to purchase stream buffer credits to complete the project. Since our last meeting, we have received a response from the EPD requiring us to purchase mitigation credits to get the needed stream buffer variance to complete the project as it is designed. Tonight, I'm seeking your permission to purchase these required credits. The cost of the required credits is one hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred twenty-four dollars. Like the rest of the project, this would be paid for out of SLO state funds, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or discussion?
How, do you know, how does the EPD, I'm sure they've got a formula that they determine that, or is it just subjective to their whim?
Well, they do have a formula, and a lot of it's based on the linear feet that's being affected, and then the width of the project to how much you encroach into that buffer. I'm not sure what that formula is, but I know they come up with an amount of credits, and in this case, we needed seventeen hundred and ninety-eight credits. If you remember back when we did the stream mitigation at the city center, it was about two hundred and forty thousand dollars it required. It was a little over two thousand credits for that one. Our engineer is not here tonight. If he was, I'd get him to come up here and try to explain that a little better. But unfortunately, this is one of those things where the only other option we have is to go back and re-engineer the road at this point, and I don't think that would be cost effective at all.
Any other discussion? Have a motion?
I guess, motion to purchase the stream mitigation credits in the amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred twenty-four dollars.
Second.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh. Next is item two, resolution.
Now, do I get to tell my side of this story?
It'll be open for discussion.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a resolution. It's been prepared. The resolution is titled, "A Resolution of the City of Coming Concerning the Request of a Member of the City Council to be Censured for the Conduct of That Same Member of the Council." I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas the City of Coming, the city is vested with power to address official malfeasance through, inter alia, its charter pursuant to sections fifty-one and fifty-two thereof. Whereas, Councilwoman Linda Ledbetter asked city officials what she could do in order to have the Council of the City of Coming censure her. Whereas this request for censure arises out of certain events that occurred after multiple executive session meetings of the Council of the City of Coming. Whereas the executive session meetings were held in order to discuss the leasing of real property, including but not limited to a lease for property and discussion of what was needed to comply with the gratuities clause of the Georgia Constitution. Whereas the facts giving rise to the requests for censure are as follows. During a discussion about potentially leasing property, Councilwoman Linda Ledbetter stated that she was on the board of the Bell Center, the Colonel Hiram Parks Bell Southern History and Genealogical Research Center, Inc., a potential tenant and current occupant of the property under discussion, and that the Bell Center could not afford the monetary consideration which would be requested by the city. This is the first time Councilwoman Linda Ledbetter disclosed that she was in any way affiliated with the Bell Center. The minutes of the City of Coming show that Councilwoman Linda Ledbetter made the motion in two thousand seventeen to enter into a lease which was never executed by the Bell Center. Upon being asked about this issue in a subsequent meeting to determine whether or not she could engage in the discussion or should recuse herself, Councilwoman Linda Ledbetter denied ever having stated she was on the board or affiliated with the Bell Center. Other than the statement of Councilwoman Linda Ledbetter, the city was not able to determine if she was in fact or is affiliated with the Bell Center. On multiple occasions, the council gave direction to the city administrator to negotiate with the Bell Center in an effort for the city to receive adequate consideration and compliance with the gratuities clause of the Georgia Constitution for the lease of the property it occupied. While he was negotiating with the Bell Center, it became obvious to the city administrator that someone who was in the closed executive session, when he was given parameters for negotiation, had already spoken with Bell Center representatives. During another closed executive session where the lease of property to the Bell Center was being discussed, the council was informed that someone had breached the privilege and confidentiality of executive session, how the same could be a breach of duty to the city, and possibly even a violation of the oath of office taken by members of the city council if it was a member of the council who disclosed the information. To convey the seriousness of the matter, the entire council was reminded such actions could be considered official malfeasance, which could ultimately result in impeachment and removal from office. After the foregoing was explained, Councilwoman Linda Ledbetter admitted that it was she who breached the privilege and confidentiality of executive session and discussed the lease of real property with Bell Center representatives. There was no further discussion of the matter, nor any discussion about impeachment or removal of any member of the council, including Councilwoman Ledbetter. The city continued to try and work with the Bell Center representatives to reach an agreement with them. Progress was made for the Bell Center to lease real property from the city, and the city was expecting to receive substantial in-kind consideration for the use of its real property. Suddenly, and to the surprise of the city, the Bell Center reneged on the tentative agreement reached with the city. During a subsequent executive session, after being informed of the Bell Center's change of position and request to be allowed to move out of its property it was occupying by June first, two thousand twenty-one, the city council discussed other potential sale or lease options for that same property, including but not limited to a potential use by Forsyth County, Georgia. The city administrator was once again tasked with reaching out to discuss the potential sale or lease uses of the property, including the potential use in conjunction with Forsyth County. Shortly after this direction was given, third parties who were not in the closed executive session began to ask questions of the city about the sale or lease options discussed by the city in closed executive session. Third parties who were not in the closed executive session began to post on social media about the options the city discussed in closed executive session. Based upon the knowledge of third parties about what the city had discussed in executive session, it became evident that once again, someone had breached the confidence of executive session and had discussed the closed meeting topics outside of the closed meeting. In an update to the discussion about the use of the city's real property and its potential for sale or lease, Councilwoman Linda Ledbetter once again admitted that she discussed closed meeting topics outside of the closed meeting without the consent or approval of the city council. The city believes that disclosure of closed executive session discussions in both of these instances hampered the city's ability to effectively negotiate for the best interest and outcome of the City of Coming. The foregoing notwithstanding, the city council was content to take no official action against Councilwoman Ledbetter, believing that the matter would no longer be a problem. Thereafter, Councilwoman Linda Ledbetter asked what she could do to have the city council censure her. Now, therefore, premises considered, be it resolved as follows, one, resolved, that the city council of the City of Coming has elected to not formally censure Councilwoman Linda Ledbetter for her conduct. Two, resolved, that based upon her request, so as to see what could be done to cause the council to censure her, the city has brought this issue to the attention of the public. Three, resolved, that while unauthorized disclosure of executive session discussions likely hurts the city when it comes to the city's negotiation of matters for the benefit of all the city's citizens, the city council of the City of Coming trusts that Councilwoman Ledbetter understands this and will refrain from disclosing to the public matters that are properly discussed in confidence in executive session for the city's benefit, so resolved this day of July, two thousand twenty-one. I know this is going to be open for discussion. I would ask everyone to please realize that in drafting this, there is nothing of the details of your lease negotiations that was disclosed. I think it's important to remember that because it could do damage to the city. If I'm going to buy a car somewhere, and I tell my neighbor what I'm willing to pay for the car, and my neighbor goes and tells somebody at a car dealership what I'm willing to pay, I've lost my ability to effectively negotiate. So in your negotiation, I do think it's appropriate that you not discuss the terms that were being discussed because that's what got us to this point to begin with, and I don't want to put us in a situation where some future tenant knows already what the city is willing to accept and not accept. That harms the city. That's the resolution that's before the council.
Any discussion?
First, I feel that we need some transparency in this particular subject. My telling of the phrase that was spoken in closed session of this contract has nothing to do with the city losing or gaining any money. It had nothing to do with a contract in which the city could possibly lose money over. No amount of money was mentioned, no amount of contract money was mentioned. It was simply that the city, the mayor, wanted these people out of this building. He had once said, walking out of the building, that the cigar shop wanted to rent it. I thought this was extremely beneath us to not go and talk to these people and say, "Hey, you're a five oh one C three. We've decided that your contract is illegal, and we want you out of there." Or at least our council had decided that it was illegal, even though his company had written the contract. I went and immediately told them that. They had thirty-three thousand books. They needed to disperse those books before the first of the year when their contract was out. I know history's not important to the majority of people, but the fact that they had the Indian history of Forsyth County where the Trailers started here, I thought was very important. I wanted them to have the chance to get everything moved. The contracts that were negotiated with them were not possible for them to accomplish, so I told them they needed to try to find a place to put those books. It gave them about six months to do that. Now, after that was done in closed sessions, it was even mentioned, I think, tearing the building down, but I walked out of that closed session. Now, the last closed session we had, the mayor stood at me and pointed and said, "I can have you put in jail. I can have you impeached. I can have you censured." I said, "Okay, have me censured." That's why I wanted me censured here today, so that I can tell everybody just how ugly and how awful he has been to me. I don't even like to go into a closed session and probably won't again because I feel that I have been treated very unfairly, and I feel that it's because I'm a woman, and because I'm old, and because he thinks I won't fight back. Well, he's wrong. And censuring, if that's the least of what you want to do for me because I spoke of something that was in closed session? I'm sorry, that should not have been discussed in closed session at all. That should have been discussed between the mayor, or the lawyer, or whoever, and this group of people. It had nothing to do with us. Now, we've moved all our contracts to the, oh, what do you call it? The land authority, the downtown land authority, so we won't be discussing contracts anymore. But I did feel that this was thoroughly unfair by everybody involved. They're gone now. That's no problem. The building's empty. It can be rented to whoever the mayor wants to rent it to. But I will not be spoken to that way again because I won't be in another closed session. That's all I have to say.
Kevin, if I could just mention one thing before there's any confusion about, my firm didn't draft that lease. That was not signed by anyone. My firm did not prepare that lease.
Kevin, do you mind giving us a brief legal analysis of the gratuities clause that we were advised of on all of our leases, not just the one?
The gratuities clause is something in the Georgia Constitution which says the state cannot grant a gratuity. And there's lots of case law that says that the gratuities clause expands not only to the state, but also to all of its political subdivisions. A gratuity is anything where the state is giving something for free, without getting anything in return. And in this case, it's a lease, and there are several cases that deal with leases. The law with respect to the gratuities clause, and what we were trying to work through, and we were trying to find a way that these folks could do something so they could stay in the property, which is where we got to when they suddenly withdrew their offer, says that the benefit has to flow to the city. It has to be a substantial benefit in relation to what is being provided. So you have to look at what the city was going to be providing, which was a space, a pretty decent sized space, not a lot of windows there, but a decent sized space where apparently you can house thirty thousand books. That's a pretty good sized space. The city has to look at what it's providing, and then has to receive, considering that, something substantial in return for it, and that's what we were working out. There is nothing that says that it has to be monetary consideration, which is why I specifically mentioned that we were talking about non-monetary, in-kind consideration.
But the crux of it is it can't be just a benefit to the community. It has to be to the city.
That is my opinion, and I know that that is the opinion of a lot of city attorneys. There's even been some talk in the General Assembly recently about really ratcheting up the penalties for local governments that violate the gratuities clause, and that is the way I view it. That's the way that I certainly always view it.
And the Bell Center wasn't the only one we discussed. I mean, without getting into details, there were some other leases that we had to kind of make sure we were matching that and renewing those leases, right?
Yes.
And everybody else worked with us?
Yes.
And understood that principle, and we figured it out.
I don't know if they understood the principle, but they worked with us, and we got it figured out.
Did your firm not represent the city when this contract was written with the Bell Center?
My firm did represent the city. I am not going to get into, I don't want to get into the advice that my firm gave the city with respect to that particular contract. I will just reiterate that my firm did not draft that lease. The first time I saw that lease was when the city administrator sent that lease to me.
Who drafted it?
And it does not match the lease that is on our computer system. I do not know the answer to that question.
How long had that contract been used?
I don't know the answer to that question because that contract was never even executed. The Bell Center never executed the agreement. They were just in the building.
That's a pretty big point. I know it was discussed, and with all due respect, the big issue is, and I understand transparency. I think in most things, we do try to be transparent, and there are reasons why you discuss certain aspects in executive session, and then it does become public knowledge after it's dealt with. There's reasons for that. So we're explicitly told we're not allowed to discuss information from executive session, and on top of that, to that point, their lease was not executed by a previous administration. We were correcting those leases. The ball was in their court. They dropped the ball. That's the bottom line. We went back and forth for months, six months or more, and I thought we came up with very reasonable.
Roofing a building?
They agreed to it. Whatever it was, they agreed to it.
I really would like to try to say, please not discuss the terms. I don't want us to be in a situation where the next tenant who wants to take over that building shows up and says, "I'll do this," when the city can hopefully get something good for the benefit of the citizens of the city if we don't discuss the terms.
Right.
We can talk more generally about what happened.
I understand. So I just, the ball was in their court, and they decided not to pursue the lease. It's unfortunate that they were put in that position, but they were put in that position by a previous administration, and we were correcting the leases for them as well as other organizations. And that was no fault of our own. We were following the law. The previous administration may not have, but that's not the point. The point is, we were correcting those leases, and the information was discussed. That's, and it shouldn't have been.
Okay, let me say this. I went to two lawyers. I paid them myself to look at your clause. They differed with you. I think it's kind of how you want to look at it, because these two lawyers are very outstanding, one in Dawsonville and one in Gainesville. I think it's however you want to look at it, but we wanted them out, so that's how we looked at it.
So what does that have to do about discussion information in executive session?
Nothing. I felt.
That's what this resolution's about, not disclosing?
Y'all are talking about the resolution, not me.
Well, that's what's on the agenda, is to talk about this.
I didn't bring up the resolution.
But to clarify, for the record, there were the people in the room in an executive session, or the people sitting up here, Phil Higgins, the city administrator, Jeff Honie, the city clerk, and Kevin Talent. By show of hands, as I've been accused of, raise your hand if I said that I would have Linda Ledbetter impeached.
Put in jail. Impeached.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
No one is saying that, everyone's saying I didn't say that.
Well, then they're lying.
So you're calling them all ours?
Yes, you stood right there and said, "I will put you in jail. I will have you impeached."
So you have eight people sitting here, elected officials, a judge.
So I dreamed that.
I don't know what you did. So now, of those people in the executive session, raise your hand if I said I would have her put in jail. Let the record show nobody. So I don't know where you're coming up with it.
You're amazing what you can get people to do.
You're amazing at your imagination, I guess. Is there any more discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Just real quick, to that point, I don't, Linda, I don't recall anybody threatening that of you. I recall that the penalties were outlined before.
Before you admitted, you were the one that did it.
Nobody said that.
You said that before I admitted it. Did he not?
I don't.
I said, these are the.
Before I admitted it, he said, "I can have them put in jail." Did he not?
For what Christopher's saying, he outlined possibilities. He did not say definitively, "I will." He did not say that. The possibilities were outlined, not that it was even directed at anybody.
He outlined that. "I can have them put in jail."
Never use the word "I." Never.
Okay.
I said, these are the potential consequences for doing it. After that, you admitted that you were the one that had spoke about.
Semantics is really interesting here.
Well, the facts are really interesting, I'll tell you that. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second. Please vote. Carrie's four oh, would Linda Ledbetter abstain? Item C, city center site furnishing quotes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The city center design team has picked out the preferred site furnishings for the city center. This includes benches, picnic tables, litter receptacles, bar top tables, bar stools, lounge chairs, bike racks, and dog waste stations. This is for all the furnishings in the entire development. Rather than getting quotes from distributors on these, we decided to get quotes directly from manufacturers. This saves the distributor markup and some sales tax. Five different manufacturers were used to meet the quantity of items needed for the site furnishings. And each manufacturer, each item was specked out specifically, but each manufacturer is considered a sole source provider in this case. The total amount for all items needed is two hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred ten dollars and eighty-two cents. Tonight, I recommend approval of this expenditure of up to two hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred ten dollars and eighty-two cents for the purchase of site furnishings for the city center. This will be paid out of grant money that we have received, recreation impact fees, and also sponsorship monies that have come in on different items. Jennifer Archer has worked really hard on procuring sponsorships for benches, picnic tables, whatnot, where we'll put up. tables, whatnot, where we'll put a plaque.
She sent me that stuff, if anybody else needs it, if you have anybody in mind that might want one, it's a pretty good package she put together for sponsorship.
Yeah, and we've had a really good community response on that for the different items. So, that will help offset this expenditure, and as you see in your packet, there are examples of the items that you can flip through and look at, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
We know, as of yet, I know sponsorship monies would still be coming in, but do we know what we anticipate the recreation impact fees and sponsorship monies cover as a portion of this?
It'll cover all of it.
Or cover the whole thing?
If we're buying straight from the manufacturer, who's going to install?
Either city staff can install this, if we have people that can do it at the time, or we can contract it out if we need to, but more likely it'll be city staff that'll install it.
Just a matter of boldness.
Yeah, just some of these sitting on concrete that are, those wraparound benches.
Yeah.
I don't know if those have any more detail that, I don't know.
Any other discussion? A motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the expenditure as outlined.
Second.
Please vote.
Thank you very much.
Carrie's four oh, would Linda Ledbetter abstain? Item D, Utilities. Number one, the Common Stormwater Management Ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the portion of the utilities ordinance that we commonly call the Coming Stormwater Management Ordinance. We're looking to do an update to it. The state of Georgia sent us a model ordinance, and we've corrected those issues that are not in compliance with the state's model ordinance. I hope your package is color-coded, so the ordinance copy that you guys should be read what's being changed. I don't think it's a substantial change, a lot of definitions have changed, but, you know, I think one of the main pushes the state has right now is something called green infrastructure and low-impact development. I'm not sure if, probably each one of you read about that, but things like perbius, pavers, we're doing that at the City Center, we have some green infrastructure there at the City Center, so we'll get credit for that. And these new subdivisions that are coming along, there are ways, they're trying to get us to hold the stormwater back on these sites and let it soak in the ground instead of running off and going right in the creek and causing floods. That's sort of a short version.
So, John, for development, you review the stormwater stuff? I didn't know if that was Scott's department.
It's a mix between Scott and I. He's pretty much pre-development stormwater guy, especially looking at the design process and the soil erosion and things like that, but then when he's done with it, he hands it off to our department and we look at kind of like post-development.
So, is this something Scott would need to kind of make sure he's good with this? Oh, it's post-construction, so, okay. But it just seems like from a pre-perspective you'd want to know.
He was, he was reading and I caught him just. But that's why I wanted to present it to you for a month or two weeks, maybe look at it, and if you feel comfortable next time approving it. In addition to that, Kevin Talent had something to mention we may add to this ordinance about stormwater detention ponds.
It's recently come to our attention that we have at least one development in the city where the owner of the stormwater detention pond, they, there are people from outside that, a development owns it, there are other developments that are contributing stormwater to it, and the way that our ordinance is written, it's the owner that's responsible for the maintenance of it, even though there are other people who are contributing to it. And we're going to work on a way that would allow us to proportionally allocate those costs for people if they can't come to an agreement themselves over how to share those costs. That's something we're going to work on, and we're going to try and go ahead and get that into this next, this next version of it so that you can consider it. I wanted to mention that to you tonight because it's not in there tonight, but it will be next month.
I think we need to force them to come up with a way to do it on their own or have their own system. If they don't want to go, if they want to share, which is a good developmental practice, they need to come up with a solution.
And this is kind of a way for us to address it when something happened in the past where they haven't done that. And we don't have anything going on where we have somebody right now who's about to get hit with that, but, you know, ten years, twelve years, fifteen years, we may be in a situation where a small neighborhood is needing to, is needing to make upgrades for a much larger area, and we're trying to figure out a way now to deal with that before it becomes an issue.
So, you think you'll have it at the next work session? You said next month.
When are you going to have it? For the, the next meeting? We'll have it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, I'll have it done. I'll get it done.
Any other questions? Moving on to number two, RFP results for Byers Road Sewer Outfall.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a project that we budgeted for, for this year. It's a gravity sewer line that runs up, parallel with Doc Bramlett Road up to three sixty-nine, and it will take gravity flow from John Burris Road, that intersection right in there. We've had three or four property owners talk to us about sewer, and we knew it a year ago, that's when we budgeted for it, so we're ready to install this line. We had four bids. The low bid came from Mid-South, or I'm sorry, proposals. The low proposal came from Mid-South Builders Incorporated in the amount of one million four hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and three dollars. All the way up to the high bid is site engineering. Their bid was two million three hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. In this project, we also were extending a sewer line by the hostel of the library that you and I have talked about. There's a trailer park there at the corner with a failing septic tank for about six trailers, and that wastewater sewer is running out on the ground, and so this is combined in to get a better price, you know, economy of scale, multiple lines of, you know, pieces of sewer line and manholes. That's within that price, just so you know. But we, we do recommend going with a low bid. We did reduce our contingency by ten thousand dollars because we looked at some of the things, we were afraid we're not, you know, wouldn't match up, and we believe we can come down, so the total we're asking for you to approve is one million four hundred and four thousand six hundred and three dollars and zero cents.
John, I think this is the line, the Byers Road, that I've gotten a few calls on from some of the property owners that received a letter.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're having to acquire quite a few easements.
We are, we're trying to obtain easements. There's one, there's not as many easements as you would think, there's a long slim, slim piece of property that has that power line on it. Have you seen that one? So, fortunately, goes, most of it goes in that easement, then we're shooting across a few property owners to get over to John Burris Road so that we can get that whole intersection.
I think the letter in itself confused them. They, they were taking it as the city was taking their property for ten dollars, and I haven't seen the letter, but I assured them that would probably not.
Well, and you know how it is, when we report, when we report an easement, it says for in consideration of what, ten dollars? I think it used to say one dollar. I don't really know why they changed it to ten, but that's just the inflation, that's just the standard.
So, it sounds like there's a lot of failing septic out there, that I don't know if there's any way we could help connect some of those people, that might be a good way.
And that's our hope too, and, you know, one thing we might consider, I've been considering is maybe lowering our connection fee for those that have failing septic tanks, and, you know.
Well, in my opinion, if they're giving part of their land for the easement, you know, that should, that's probably pretty close to the cost of a connection fee too.
We'd have to look at that, I guess I'd have to talk to Kevin too about that.
Typically, just so we have a good track record on that, typically, if we were going to do something like that, would end up paying fair market value for the easement and then taking that back, just so that the tap fee does show up, so that we're, it doesn't look like.
That makes sense.
To make it easy, think we're giving away tap fees, and we don't want to be in that situation, so we typically would do it that way, so there's a good paper trail of how we do it.
Well, I don't know if we want to file with a follow-up letter or anything, but they were, they were more confused, I think, than as concerned.
I think that's on the actual easement they, that we've requested them to sign, so.
That was my thought, probably.
We can talk to them about it, but I think this will open up a good area for a lot of sewer connections, not only the new development, but also a lot of old and failing septic tanks too.
This will be able to reach all the way up across from Publix at Matt, right?
It will, and that's a hotspot right now, and there's a lot of property to the south of three sixty-nine that's being looked at by developers right now.
And are we all the way to the south of Doc Bramlett too?
We're all the way, right, that's correct, on the south side of three sixty-nine, all the way to Doc Bramlett, then we're on the east side of Doc Bramlett, so that's kind of the, I call it the outer perimeter, really, for us.
We are on the east side of Doc Bramlett too.
The east side, not the west side, the east.
East side up to three sixty-nine.
Yeah, okay.
Kenny's on the west. Was this in the budget, I mean, guidelines of what we had budgeted? Right, we had, we had budgeted for this, for this year. I think we're a little over because we added that, are we under? Oh, well, thank you. We're under. I should have asked you before I said that. Excuse me, we're under. But we added Sony Drive Gravity Sewer to handle that problem while we had a contractor under contract, so, so we're under. Hallelujah.
Have a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the bid to Mid-South Builders for one hun, one million four hundred and four thousand six hundred and three dollars.
Second.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, John. Number three, RFP results for Triple Road Sewer Outfall on Force Main.
So, these next two were also budgeted projects. The really one project, we just broke it into pump station, because it's kind of one kind of contractor, and the other contractors, the gravity sewer line and the force main coming out. So, we're talking about the outfall gravity sewer and the force main. We had four proposals, and the low proposal was one million three hundred and fifteen thousand seventeen dollars. The high proposal was two million three twenty-three and eighteen dollars. So, we met with these contractors and talked to them about some way to reduce, do we over-engineer, did, you know, did we're shooting the moon, you know, that's sort of our talk with them, is how do we reduce the price? And so, they pointed out something that we had thought about, and that's that instead of running a long water line to get water to this pump station, because you have to, you have to have water to keep it clean, so, and that was part of this project, not the pump station project, which we'll get to next, but, so we, we have a savings of seventy-five thousand five hundred and ten dollars, and we've reduced the price by drilling a well, believe it or not, a small well, instead of running that big long water line. So, the total is one million two hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and seven dollars from STRAC by saving that amount of money, and that would be part of their project, so. So, we would like to recommend STRAC, it's a great contractor, we're fortunate we got them, and we'd like to ask the council to accept that low bid. And you feel like this will be a, the drilling the well, is it? I think it'll be sufficient for the little waters they use at the station. It was a lot of money to put into something that they weren't using the water every day. And so, another point to bring up, that's a good point, you'll see the next bid in a minute, but in total so far, we have about one point eight million dollars of revenue coming in for this project. That's sewer capacity charges for Publix and several out parcels, there's a car wash and some other out parcels, and we don't know what they are yet exactly, but also these developments have committed about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards, just towards the pump and the sewer and everything, just to get it there, so that's above and beyond our sewer capacity charge. So, total between one point five and one point eight million dollars now, and I think this is going to be a really good moneymaker for the city from a business standpoint, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Any other questions?
Have you already drilled the well?
No, ma'am, we haven't.
But you know that you can.
Well.
You know there's water.
Well, I believe there is, real close to a lake, so we know the water table is really high down in that area.
Motion to approve.
I appreciate, once again, I appreciate you negotiating even better, you know, quotes than what they initially are bringing forward, eliminating some things that aren't necessary. But I'll make a motion that we approve the Triple Road Gravity Sewer and Force Main to STRAC in the amount of one million two hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and seven dollars.
Second.
Please vote.
Thank you, Council.
Carrie's five oh. Number four, RFP results for Triple Road Sewer Outfall Pump Station.
So, this is the, of course, the attached pump station. We had six bids, they were all really close. The low bid came from All South Constructors, which we've used before. The amount is one million five hundred and twenty thousand two hundred dollars, that's the low bid. The high bid came from Willow, at the amount of one million six hundred and nine thousand ninety-eight dollars and forty cents. In this project, we're, we've decided to remove part of the responsibility of the contractor. There's a fifty thousand dollar allotment for them to negotiate with Sony Electric to get power to the station. We believe we can do that for less, so we don't know what the exact savings is, but to bring All South bid down to one million four hundred and seventy thousand two hundred dollars, and then we'll negotiate with Sony to try to get the power down there, because they're probably going to have to set a bunch of holes, so.
So, the, the letter we've got says the fifty thousand is for moving water line and putting in.
Right, and that's on that other project, it's really the.
Saying it's on this one, so is it just a typo that should be Sony?
It's not a typo, it's really all one project, you know, so it got put in both letters, so, but that's not that fifty thousand, that's the fifty thousand. It's actually on the next page, and it says, power connection allowance, and it was fifty thousand dollars, so that's the fifty that we're pulling out of this contract.
Any other questions? A motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve All South Construction for one point four, or one million four hundred and seventy thousand two hundred dollars.
Second.
Second.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, John. There are no announcements, there is no executive session, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Please vote. Carrie's five oh.